Please rise and recite the pledge together. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As known, Ms. Lawson will be absent tonight. She is really fighting the upper respiratory antibiotics. It's not going well right now. First to pick the business is approval of the agenda. Do we have... Agenda's been presented. Do we have a motion to accept it?
So am I.
Second, Ms. Johnson. She makes a motion and Ms. Johnson makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, if there's any further agendas presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any individual here to address the board on an agenda item or a non-agenda item? If not, we appreciate the attendance, but doesn't look like it pays to call. South Dakota presentation. Dr. Carter.
We had our second trip to South Dakota. I think, Gigi, you were gonna kinda give your perspective first and then we'll... A couple of participants are in the audience as well.
Sure. I think for me, the greatest impression that it made for me, because I was not looking at it from the perspective that like some of the teachers were about some of the detailed things, curriculum and that aspect. So I was trying to just kind of look at maybe a broad overview of their school system. And so there were several words that come to my mind that stick out to me. One is the language that they use. I was so impressed with just the positive nature of the language in the schools, like on their walls, the language that all of their staff uses, that the students use themselves. You can tell that they really do use it because the kids use it. That's the language that they use back to you when they're talking. The other was just the culture of learning, that the students take ownership for their own learning and even at this young age. And I know we heard that from the first time that you went and you're thinking like these are, you know, really young children, like how do they... How can they take ownership for their learning? How do they know what they need to learn? But it's very impressive. They do. They come in in the morning, they go about what they're supposed to do, they get into their rooms. We were able to actually watch their opening morning session at the elementary school and then watch as they did their breakdown into their classrooms and where they were. And they're just... They are very busy about their work. They're happy, they're very engaged. If you ask them questions, they can answer those questions. They will even ask you questions back, which I loved that and I thought that, you know, that's very hard to teach and somehow in this process that they're teaching that to them. And I also picked up on the fact that there is a huge buy-in from the community for this program. The parents are totally supportive, they want their students in it. They call them... I'm calling them students, but they call them learners, which I love the idea of that because we're all learners. When we went to the middle school, we had the opportunity, we were in their library area, they used it as their STEM area building.
Maker space.
Uh-huh. And... But we had two students that came in there to talk to us. And one was a seventh grade young man and he was showing us how he goes about his day and how he pulls up his schedule for the day. He makes his own schedule. He has options, there are certain things that he's locked into, but he pulls up his schedule. And Woody and I tried to recruit him to come back to Tallahomea because he was an excellent athlete and according to him. But their school...
Those are always come.
That's right. But their school had also had great success. But one of the questions that Woody asked him when we were standing there, he said, "Now, when you first started this, did you just pick the... Did you just make your choices based on where your friends were going?" Like, did you... You know, you just look at everybody around you like, "Well, I wanna go to this, I wanna go to that." And he said, "Yes, he did at first, but then he realized that that was not best..." And those were his words. "That was not best for my learning." So I'm just... I'm trying to explain it to you without you being there the best way that I can. It's difficult to explain, but it is a culture. It's a...
Was he like two years into the program or did you ask him that?
He had not done it at... They did not have it at his elementary school.
Okay.
So he was just doing this at the middle school.
Okay.
And so anyway, I mean, I came away with very, you know, just really a positive, very positive outlook about the program that they're doing and the possibility for us to incorporate some of this, all of this. One of the most positive things that I would say is that the things that they're doing are things that every teacher in all of our schools in every classroom could be incorporating into, you know, into their learning. So that was exciting for me.
I have a question. So what motivates these learners to just go gung ho in this program? What's... What... Are they given some type of other incentive? I mean, because it sounds a little bit atypical that you can have a whole school full of people that just jump right in there. I mean, what is in it for them that motivates them to do? I mean, it's nice. I'm...
You're asking what accountability is.
Right. And somebody else might wanna jump in here also if something like, you know, if you had an idea about that. I would say that in the cohort, it is those teachers that are in the cohort are... They're driving that because it is just so positive.
Is it also that the parents have requested that these children participate in it? So I would say that that's probably gonna be a big driving force too, Steve, because this is so much of a choice, correct?
Right now, it's a choice. And I think, you know, for me, I've watched two of the morning meetings now and one of the things that happens in these morning meetings where there's 87 kids and the teachers are on the perimeter is every morning they give a shout-out to a student that has achieved something the day before.
That is good.
And so that motivator of positive reinforcement, it's powerful.
And the kids do all... Like, they get so excited when they recognize another student. All the other kids, like, they give them high fives. I mean, it was very genuine.
It's a culture. And the thing of it is, it's no longer school work. They've almost taken the analogy of school being a mirror of work, homework, and the boss telling you what to do. And I think that the phrase I kept hearing time and time again is "voice and choice." The students have a voice in what's going on, they have a choice. And I know we've got... Was there anything else?
No.
So, Woody, you wanna introduce the other two teachers of what this second trip here?
Yes, sir. We have Brad Penny from Fager and Jennifer Main from Robert E. Lee.
Okay. And you guys wanna kinda share what your perspectives were?
If you don't mind, I took some pictures.
Sure.
Put it in perspective. This is from... From the teacher's point of view, so that's just the territory of ups and falls and the next picture system for fun as well. And of course, this year we didn't get any snow, we get there, there's snow up to our waist. This right here just immediately impacted me as educators. All these kids, they huddle up in this group right here in this little pod area and the adults, as you can see around the perimeter, are their teachers. There's another one over here off-camera. And the thing that really got me is that they start their day where the kids get a chance to talk. The adults didn't start it. Well, they started with the pledge allegiance, but the kids get to talk. And I know as a fifth grade teacher, the kids like to come in, they like to tell you stories. They like to tell each other stories. Well, this gave them a perfect opportunity to sit there to begin their day. They got to volunteer and no one was made to do it. So if you'll flip to the next slide, this little girl right here, she has a cue. It's got a microphone on top of it. And they throw that around and each one gets to say something that happened the day before. And they have something called 16 habits of mind, such as things they find humor in, things they find awe, things that inspires them, even things that they felt impulsive for. And they would start their... Like, this little girl probably said something along the lines of, "Last night I felt... Found humor in so-and-so." And the kids would get all excited about it and then they would pass the cue to somebody else and keep spreading that and spreading that. And the kids would enjoy it and listen to it, they clapped for each other. And there's a little guy that would bring everybody else to attention, had a little cute little phrase that would yell out. Everybody would snap immediately to attention. So you could tell that this was something that they had rehearsed and practiced and practiced and practiced. And now they got it perfected and these kids were very well behaved and do exactly what to do for each cue.
Well, and just back on that last picture that was just shown, just the kids that aren't speaking are turned to that speaker and listening to her. And I know in my classroom, that's something that we work on, but that again speaks to their culture and how that is something they do every day. But I think that's very interesting. And they have different things, I think, that they do every day during their morning meetings to talk about current events, which would be so neat to be able to have that time that's dedicated to that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Because I felt like a lot of times in the presentation, we're not understanding the contrast. So would you say typical, if I'm thinking about our schools, the way it's up, you come in, you're gonna sit in the cafeteria and you're gonna be quiet, that's your first thing to have to do at school, like as it stands now?
Sure.
Right? I mean, I'm just trying to think of what does it look like for a morning here right now compared to that? Because I think that that's the example you're saying, is there's so much energy because they can immediately come in and whatever. And I think probably the contrast, if I'm not mistaken, it's just that it's like, come in and sit down and everyone has to be quiet.
Well, I would tell you that they do have a waiting area in their lunchroom.
Okay.
So they come off the buses and they... Of course, they all have their snow pants and their boots and all that, so they come off the buses.
Takes a while to get it...
And they drop 'em off. Then they do have a breakfast, which is controlled. So this would be like after your first bell to kinda...
The cohort, yes.
Right. And they go to their home studio to do like lunch now in attendance.
And then they do this meeting.
But after that, taken care of, then they all go out to that common area.
Okay. I was trying to figure out the logistics that when you're doing your...
Right.
Management stuff. Yep.
So talking about incentives, as you pointed out, each teacher went around the room and talked about so-and-so has mastered this and they got a certificate, the kids high-fived each other. There was also a birthday committee, which I thought was... I mean, it's so simple to think about, but a birthday committee where every day you celebrate somebody's birthday that happened there. The day that we were there, it's not a child's birthday, it was a former teacher's birthdays. So the birthday committee sang "Happy Birthday" to them. And I just thought that's amazing way to start your day. I even called Ms. Edens sometime after that, said, "Why are we not doing this right now?" This next slide, they then go to a reading, a nine-block reading station, which is... They're using more of a blended station rotation. The previous slide was them doing a full group. Every day they start full group and do some kind of reading mini lesson together. And then they break into the station rotation. This picture's just to show their flexible seating that they have. I thought it was pretty interesting because they're using the little risers on their desks with some standing areas and they got some square tables and some things like that that we're using here in Tallahomea right now. But they have a station rotation and each child knows exactly where to go, when to go, based on the schedule they have. They break it into two parts. You have two groups that are learning to read and you have two groups that are reading to learn. And it's not grade level dependent. If you are an older, they call littles, middles, molders, and elders. You're an older and you're still trying to learn to read, then that's the part they're gonna put you in until you are ready to move on to the next part. I think we're misplace. I saw a little second grader in the reading to learn and he was reading a big old novel with the rest of them.
The stations that they did were based on daily five and daily three, which is not unlike what we're doing right now. But the students are picking in the learning to read, the students are picking what station they go to and when during the week. They have like a coaching session with their teacher, their facilitator, to come up with a schedule. But again, they have ownership even in their station rotation schedule. And just giving them that little piece of ownership makes them feel responsible for their learning.
And you mean more like, they're gonna have to go to all the stations, but I can decide them to do this one first?
But I can plan it.
Okay.
Yeah. I still get to plan that time for myself. The stations... The teacher had a station and they were divided up around the room, but again, the kids knew where to go based on that schedule. Everything was laid out for them.
On the next slide, I think I have examples. Well, let's see. Somewhere in there, I think I did, but they had it laid out day by day and they grouped them by color. There's white, there's red, and yellow. And each day, they are looking at... One of the stations is they're reading to themselves. There's another station where they're listening to something read. There's vocabulary and so forth. But all students knew exactly what to do based off their schedule. And while each of the four rooms I went into, everybody was doing it very fluidly. There was not any kind of, "What do I do? What do I do?" It was all very fluid. And I really think I do have to picture that slide so maybe that might have worried. This one right here is the way they do their math. And they have measurement topics over there to the left, I know it's hard to see. And then they had it color-coded and each color, I believe, is a grade level. And so I believe that the red or the black... I think that's actually the black color over there is fifth grade and second grade all the way and that bluish color.
So what you're looking at is one student that the parents can see, the student can see, the teacher can see. So this one particular student, I don't know if he was an older or a molder, but was doing some of the things. It was in the fifth grade. Money and time was still back and was something that would be targeted. So it's kinda like GPS farming. Every student knew what their strengths and their areas of growth were. And so the teachers then can also do that and recluster the kids based on what the child is missing.
So who creates that? Is that like a software program has created this or the teachers created that?
I believe Mr. Light and their curriculum people created that.
This is a program that they have a vendor that created it for them, which we can use the same program. The part that is the heavy lift is the alignment of the topics and breaking the strands down. And I think, Susan, you gotta speak to the sequencing of it and such?
Sure. They had teachers who met as well to help look at the standards and put them in sequential order. And that way, I know many times what used to be taught in the first grade, second grade, and third grade's moved to fourth. Their progression is set unless they choose to change it because so much of what we do is sequential. And so they looked at the grade level standards for place value and said, "Okay, there's what they were in first grade or in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade." But the child was able to move fluidly through those from one grade to the next. They removed the milestones that were put in by an identified grade level. And so that's... And she said, I was talking to the curriculum director and she said they were constantly tweaking this.
Okay. So is there a breakdown season? So like, now one of these, like one of these subtopics would then have lots of the strands underneath it, obviously, so...
Yes. Yes. So when you look at place value, when you see the black on the end, those are fifth grade. But if I was on MT-10, and that's what we're looking at, I would open up and there would be a series of lessons that would address MT-10. Because MT-10 could be one standard, if it was a big standard.
Okay.
Or it could be a grid of standards that all had something in common.
Okay. Who else, guys?
This one right here, I learn, I practice, I master. That's their targets in math. They learn, they practice, and they master it. This is a different model that they use. It's also blended where they go to a coaching sessions as needed with a teacher and there's always someone getting coached. And there's several students learning on their own pace. Some of them weren't there showing that they had mastered something.
Absolutely. The I-practice, I think, is really neat. It lets the students practice in different ways. The students that I saw in one of the math classes, they were just doing task cards like we do all the time. But when they finish something, they're taking a picture of it with their iPad to submit it to their teacher. So their teacher sees it immediately and engage, "Do they understand this? Do they need a coaching session?" So it's that immediate feedback to the students to say, "Ooh, I may need to go back to I-learn or I could move on and maybe try I-Master."
I took a couple of pictures of some students dealing with some of those three things. That's the reading thing I was talking about, so I got that mixed up in my slides. Each day they have their three or four stations they go to and every time a certain time ago, they would go to the next one. But everybody starts full group and everybody at some point will have guided with a teacher. This... I got this from a little girl, so if I could take a picture of this. In their folder, they have a math gold sheet and the whole continuum that you saw a minute ago, which they keep track of themselves. And each day they can decide if they're learning it, are they practicing it, when are they gonna master it, the topics and so forth. So a lot of their learning's in their hands and they have a lot of choice in the speed that they do it, which brings in the personalization. These are some girls that were practicing. They were doing money. Probably these were some littles and middles. And they went for it, they were using plastic money and these cards and they were going at it, they were working at it, working at it, working at it. That's just one of the many stations going on in the classroom. Probably six or seven different stations going on and I just happened to take this one picture.
And the thing of it is, is that the technology has not displaced the manipulatives. The technology is there to support and is used when appropriate. So, yeah, go ahead.
This girl here is doing voice and choice. Once you master a topic and have proven that you've mastered that topic, then you get to do a voice and choice project. She's doing one of her money. And it looks like, I believe, she was doing some kind of a poster. But I saw there's various different projects. They weren't all posters, they were all various different ones that they were doing. But they had a voice and choice where they got to pick what they wanted to do to continue their learning on that particular standard. This is a little girl who is doing a mastery sheet. And I took a picture of mastery sheet, it's upside down, but they had to prove their mastery in three ways. And sometimes they would have to prove it, maybe the algorithm, followed by a model, followed by maybe a journal. So there's different ways they had to prove mastering. They did have to prove it through a coaching session as well. And once again, they would upload that to their teacher and once the mastery's proven, then they would move on to voice and choice. This is probably... I told my students, I said, "You guys can't handle 32 degrees outside." Asked a little second or a little... A little little. I said, "How cool is it before you can't go outside?" And she looked at me all sorts and said, "Zero degrees." So sure enough, there they are, they're at their plan, having their recess.
Well, and that's one of the teachers on this...
Above the town. Yeah.
And that's 40 degrees warmer than our previous treatment. Just one more point about the... I think it was math that I saw was really neat. There's a little girl who was wanting to do play a game as part of her practice and she needed to find a partner to play it with. So instead, just going, "Can you play? Can you play? Can you play?" They had a board up there with every child's name on it and a magnet. And if you're ready, if you wanted to play a game, a math game, you would put a magnet next to your name. So she would look up there and I said, and I looked at her and said, "So how do you pick a partner?" She goes, "That person right there has a magnet next to their name." So she put her magnet next to a two, they would get together. Sure enough, five minutes later, they were in the floor being together. So none of it had to go, "Mr. Faye, can I do this? Can I do this?" They were running that classroom, were running it correctly. It was very fluid, very organized.
And so how much of it would you say is the structure of the program compared... Like that thing, what you're talking about? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is second to fifth grade, them all being in cohort and all that, I'm like getting that visual and everything. And then I'm trying to wonder, what parts of this can you just incorporate? Because it has nothing to do with you needed to have a second, fifth, and fifth grade. You know what I'm saying? Like the birthday committee, like you called back and said, "Well, obviously we can start that now." You know? I'm like, what about even the magnet thing and having that ability in your own classroom?
Absolutely. We could absolutely do a lot of the things that they're doing right now in our classrooms. I think the powerful thing about this is the personalization and that the kids get exactly what they need and when they need it. And instead of, you know, when I do lesson plans, I'm making them on Saturday or Sunday and that's what we're gonna do for the week. But if I have a child that has already mastered it, I need to have something else. And I think this program is so personalized, those kids get exactly what they need, when they need it. But when they need the teacher and they see the teacher often, they still have that as a resource. You know what I was going, I thought, I'm thinking about my second grade babies when I taught second grade, I'm thinking, are they gonna be looking at the iPad the whole entire time? Like, what is that teacher? What is her role? But seeing her as a facilitator and really involved in the classroom and those kids use their iPads, but they use the technology as like a leverage to what they need. It's not all the tech. The teachers use the best instructional practices and the tech is just a tool to use.
I was just wondering what components you could possibly already incorporate without, you know?
I think the continuum, that's one of the advantages, putting the standards on the continuum in the cohort. And I think the other awesome thing that they add is that empower, that computer platform where the work is put into I-learn, I-practice, I-master. That's impressive because in two trips, no child has ever said, "What am I supposed to be doing?" I mean, I think they do a great job on the front end of really hammering, you know, the expectations and the procedures and that kinda stuff. But even after that, the program has to have merit, that platform with the content put on. Has to have merit or you would have kids all over the place. And I think the choice is another really important thing. And I think it speaks to what you asked earlier, Dr. Lynn. You know, hey, why is there this school out there that everybody's just saying, "Hey, I'm ready to participate?" I think the fact that the students do get some freedom, I think they do get some choices over... Not all the time and it's not chaotic, it's not out of control, but students do sometimes get to say, "You know, I know everybody else is doing it that way, but I think I can prove to you what I'm supposed to know my way." And that's accepted. And then there are other times where it's not accepted, where, "No, we need you to show us these three ways." So I think that student... We call it student ownership. I think that is a really important aspect of them taking responsibility, them taking ownership. And I think when that interest is there, they are much more eager to proceed with their education.
Some of the things that I've seen, my two trips up here, go back to when I was a classroom teacher, both elementary and high school, it's just good teaching, right? Student-centered classroom. I mean, we talked about it in our Ministry of Teamings, what is a characteristics of effective instruction? The thing that's... That it's difficult if you're looking at a, say, a fourth grade, is that fourth grade content window is so small.
Right.
And I wish I had been in, you know, I'm having flashbacks to say, "Well, they mastered all the fourth grade stuff, what do you... Let them do the fifth grade stuff." Well, but if they do that, what are they gonna do in sixth grade? And so having this span, I think it allows for kids to have aptitude in a certain area to learn it deeper and wider.
Right.
Deeper and wider. The other thing, and then Woody, just a second, I'll have you introduce the other... The team and we'll talk to them and kinda like the next steps. The thing I wanna stress on this cohort that you saw pictures of, you saw kids, right? And within these grade, within these cohorts, they take it so that you have so many kids at disability level, so many kids at disability level, so many kids at disability level. And so it is truly a mixed bag. And special ed students are a part of that. And special ed students are a part of that. Kids that are talented and gifted are a part of what you saw. I think one of you said you had a second grader and he was in reading books with, with the, you know, the olders and such. And I think that's really powerful in that, in that setting, we've taken this sifting and sorting kids by age and now they're sifted and sorted by learning styles. And again, if, if I had a special needs child, I would want them in that environment because they're just immersed. They're just immersed. You want to go ahead and introduce the rest of the team?
Let me, oh, Mr. Johnson had a question. I'm sorry.
I don't know whether you guys would know, whether you talked to anybody about it. And I don't know whether the timeframe allows for an answer. But I would wonder also, as I always do, if this approach and this style of learning has had a positive impact on reading ability for kids going into middle school and high school? Because that's one of, you know, it's a hotspot, you know? Did you not learn to read in elementary school? Now you're going down the tubes. So that's what I wanted to know, if that has been evidenced yet.
Also, I can't really speak to the evidence. I can speak to the flexibility of the structure because when they're in reading, they are reading. And they, they actually kind of studied, hey, how much of our reading time are we actually spending reading? And how much are we spending on, you know, grammar or other spelling and that kind of stuff? And so they separated all of that from reading and they have a reading time. And certainly some of it is informational text, you know, pull information out of text. But some of it is, hey, why do I enjoy reading? And they really want them reading from the entire, so is there evidence of that? I don't know that I can answer that question.
Yeah, I think I'd have to ask Travis or.
Susan, you want to throw away on that?
Sure, because that's one of the questions I had. And I don't know how their state testing compares to our state testing. I do not know that. But they did say that there was an increase in scores on their state testing for the reading portion. I don't know how big of an increase there was and I don't know anything about their state test.
And they've only done this, this is their fourth year?
Yes, this is their.
Yeah, you might share about the ACT.
They did say at the, at the high school level, when we were there for the first trip, that the scores was almost a two-point increase on ACT scores when they compared those who have been through the customized path, the personalized path, path compared to those in the traditional.
I had a question. Did you, did any of y'all go in the traditional classroom? No, I'm just wondering how much, because to me, it sounds like there's so much like you were talking about that could be used there. And I wonder how they're incorporating that. And I wonder how many of the kids during there wish they were in the other.
The only thing, I, I had some, I was able to step away from the group while I was there just to kind of snoop. And I think the biggest, just doing a two-minute walk through a bunch of classrooms, the, the biggest difference was it was, this was student-directed and when you went into a traditional classroom, it was a teacher-directed. So they still had the, you know, a lot of the things, but it was the teacher telling the kids, okay, now we're going to do this. And there wasn't, there wasn't the Voice and Choice.
Right. So that reminded me of Montessori. Has anyone, I don't know if anyone, I, my children didn't do Montessori, but I'm, now I'm at educational classes. That was like, you know, that was her big thing, is that the kids directed. So I wondered, does this look like grown up?
Did you say your education classes, your college class taught that?
Yeah, yeah, I was talking about mine.
And that would scare me because when, if, the way it was presented to me in 1974 was that I got to choose and I got about eight choices. And if it'd been me, I'd been looking for the recess choice. Because I was always a little bit nervous about, if that's really.
That's what they're doing though. They're choosing.
Well, somebody from the last presentation said that sooner or later, somebody's looking me up for one of where I had chosen any other items.
Within the rabbit.
Right. That's how Montessori.
When you move on to the, to the middle school, you know, one of the kids told us, we were asking about his schedule on the quarterback, took two science classes because he had a science test that day and he knew he was behind.
So that was his choice. He could, he could double up, is what he said. I could double up on science today, tomorrow he'll do something else. But, but also his teacher had locked him in to some things, like there are some things.
Yeah, there's, there's some accountability there that the class I had didn't mention much of that. My natural learning desires would lead me to get everything by the end of the year and I know me pretty well and that probably would not be what I would do.
The, the thing to keep in mind is, the Montessori, that's, that's a good analogy.
I just wondered if it applied.
Yeah, but, but the kicker was in that they did not have the means to manage all the children. Whereas in this model, they do have the means to manage all the children, plus give them instantaneous feedback.
And I, and I did ask one little girl the question because she was just working away. And I said, okay, so what happens if you don't understand something? Like you're trying to do this and you don't understand it, you don't know what you're supposed to be doing. And she said, well, first I asked three. So there's, like she could ask three people for some help. And she said, or I just, I text or email on her iPad, my coach, and said, they'll answer me right back and then, or they'll say, you know, they'll come over to them. So, because I thought like, you know, what do you do if you just get stuck and you don't really know what you're doing? So that did not seem to be a problem at all either.
You know, when we went to Collierville and the student was there instructing the class and the teacher was back, that was very impressive. Because I know in my own experience, there's a different level from being able to pass a test yourself and being able to instruct someone, especially a group that's on varying levels of understanding.
Dr. Dill, hey, you want to introduce the, the team here?
Robert Stevens and Miss Esther Davis.
You're making progress on your arm, I think.
Yes, sir.
Good for you.
Thank you.
The thing I, and I want to, I want to brag on these guys a little bit in that, so we went out to South Dakota, we came home and they immediately wanted to start unpacking the curriculum and start working through things, right? And so as they were trying to figure out times and such, I think Brett, you had a commitment at the house and you had to go home and be with the kids. And so if you look at this week's blog post, there's a picture of, of these four working in the room and Brett's, you know, he Skyped it or he Googled it. So they were, they were modeling what 21st century learning needs to look like. And even though they were in different, you know, four of them were together and Brett was not, they were all there working and sharing a common dock. And really and truly, that's the way learning is going to look like and what they were practicing. Anything you ladies would want to add to it or?
No, I think, yeah, we heard some of the exact same things that we mentioned from our trip. A little less adventurous in some aspects, but still very excited, very excited what's going on.
Well, someone, someone on our, our team this last year, she kept wanting snow. She wanted to see it snow. She wanted to see it snow. And so when we got to the Sioux Falls airport and they're de-icing the planes and the good fog was out trying to push, I'm thinking, gee, gee.
I'm like, are you happy now? We're sitting on this plane.
So kind of our, our next steps is between now and into the fall, we're, we do need to do a curriculum alignment. We need to unpack the curriculum. Susan is, is the point person on that. And getting things in that sequential order, that'll be the next step. The next step after that is we need to talk to Travis or some other folks. We may have someone here in Tolahoma that can build us the platform that we can do that pre-assessment piece. We need to get that in place. And then we need to decide at that point, probably this time next year, we'll be recruiting kids or trying to find a sample size of students to be for this first, first go around and such. There will be some stipulations with that. I know at the board table, we've talked about having it be an open application from across the district. That, that has yet to be determined. But whoever the parents are, they need to know upfront that this is a pilot project that is their choice to have their children be a part of it. The technology piece, you know, we're, they're going to, we'll probably need some kind of a surface. They did not use Chromebooks or laptops. They had a, I don't know if it was an iPad or a Surface, but that's what they carried with them so that they could, you know, prop it up, use it. And then also they use it as a direct means of communication with their, with their teachers and such. And then so for the 2021 school year, these four right here would be piloting it at, at Robert E. Lee and such. So we're continuing to move forward. We'll continue to give you guys updates on that just for the benefit of the board. Right after spring break, we're making a trip to see some schools up in Iowa. Kathy Rose, Principal Rose is here and she's got some of her teammates. And we'll be looking to see what that secondary piece needs to look like. I guess again, the, the thing this time, which was, was very interesting, was to see how it continued through the middle school and into the high school and that there was the same language all the way through. So yeah, yeah.
Good presentation.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Let's move to consent agenda. And if it's, I always ask if there's anybody who wants to move one and if it's all right, I'm going to move, I would like to move one and that's the board work groups. So I'm entertaining a motion for the consent agenda for the minutes that's left. Is there a motion to accept? Ms. Fogarty and Dr. Lynn. Any further questions?
We are, we are moving them to where?
To, to the next piece of information. I just want to discuss that just a little bit.
Okay.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as it remains, please raise your hand. Let me get a motion on the floor first for the work groups, which I'm assuming that basically what we want to do is get, have the information from the members. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion to, to accept the board work groups as presented?
Second.
Who was first?
G G G.
And us. Any further discussion? I'd like to, for the discussion, just read a quick thing I prepared. And this, please know that this, I would deny feelings before we had new work groups under the old system. Work groups are committees, work independent of administration. And administration is a big help in coordinating meeting places, coordinating times when members are available and notifying staff members that they may be needed to provide information. Also remember that the committees have an investigative responsibility. They give advice to the board when action is necessary. Only the board in its majority vote can take action. After one, we'll always give plenty of weight to the administration and committee advice. If that advice is not final, that final vote rests with four of the board members. Anybody else like to add or question?
Oh, I think that sounds great. My question would be, we haven't really discussed time. Like, so I'm the rabid one that can meet every hour of the day.
We need somebody rabid. What I'd like to do.
One week, every other week, you know?
I've got to go to a wrestling, high school wrestling banquet when we get done. But Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Carter is willing to stay and if we need to coordinate times or what he wants to say is, I said, I felt like, I told him that how some of these committees or board groups, work groups have worked in the past, I'd like to know what, what worked good, but also know, like to know his opinion of what worked and correctly was, was a problem.
Okay. Are you going to pull it out, Pat, so that people can see what they are or not?
Is it available, the board members?
I'd assume it might be, I think.
Oh, I've got it right. I've got it here. We're asking if she can get it.
I just thought that might be nice.
Yeah, nice suggestion. All right, now, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and accept it. Any others discussion? If not, before the board, the work groups is presented, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you for putting up a reading there. Unfinished business, the building and grounds work group, also, also known as the past maintenance committee. Met Friday, Dr. Lynn.
Change that language.
Yeah, that's right. I got to get with it. Dr. Lynn and Mrs. Lawson and myself met with Mr. Carver, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Rodley and also Coach Oliver, the athletic director. And some of the reports coming out of that, OLG, our engineering firm, it's, it's working with us to coordinate the drainage problems and also the freshwater problems at Bel Air. They have already got some prices in and they're not completely firm yet, but the prices look good. And it's going to be, hopefully, it looks positive that the prices are going to be cheaper than what we had expected it to be. Next meeting, we hope that we have a little bit firmer prices and a little bit more report on when that would start and hopefully that would start in, during the summer break. And remember that it's not just drainage problems. It's also, we had problems with freshwater coming into the building. Those pipes leaking and it's been a maintenance.
Did that rain a couple of weeks ago?
I don't, I'm sure the, something was busy, but we haven't had, haven't heard anything that was worse than normal. Yeah, and Clifton is looking at the, the proposed contracts and so forth.
But you're saying a bid on even concrete?
The bids have not been let yet. We are having Clifton review the, the documents to include retainage and I just want to plug, what's the other one? Retainage.
Performance.
Performance with the project. So we want that written in before we let any of the bids.
Coach Oliver is getting prices on doing some work to the bleachers and the gym. I won't go into, it could be a whole lot of discussion if you'd like to know what he's talking about doing. He's trying to gain some space and also address some sound system problems. He's going to also get prices on pressure washing the stadium. It's due in the normal cycle now. And we're decided, I think, as the committee would recommend, that administration reach out to the Department of Education who will give us an assessment of each of our facilities. And that's kind of in conjunction with some of the report that Mr. Carver will make later on. Are there any questions? Dr. Lynn's that pretty well. Anybody have another question?
I feel reasonably confident that that's going to happen this summer, the project of that. We will get to that timeline.
I feel real good about it. Mr. Carver, 1920 budget.
I met with senior staff today and we were working on the 1920 budget. We have made some assumptions as we are budgeting that operational costs will stay pretty much flat for the upcoming year. We are excited to sit down with the Budget Finance Committee, which would be, I guess, Ken and Pat, and go through with you all what our projected revenues will be and have some discussion about what our projected expenditures will be for the upcoming year. As, as you are all aware, we did have an increase in FTEs, which will impact our budget for the upcoming year. Historically, just to remind the board that the salary schedule is a 1.5% increase on step. Historically, or not historically, but more times than not, there's been a 2% increase. So if you are someone that.
On top of that.
On top of that. So if you're someone within the scope of the salary schedule, you would be looking at a three and a half percent raise from this year to next year. The other thing to keep in mind too is that those who are at the top end of the salary schedule, there are no more steps. So unless there is the, the 2% raise, some of our veteran teachers would not be getting an increase in wages for the upcoming year. So those are some things we want to look at. The other piece of it is too, kind of dovetailing on the, on the building and grounds piece, is that prioritizing the needs of the, of the district with the physical plants and then starting to build a budget to address those prioritized needs. And with, with tight funding, we can't do everything at once. So it's just going to be something that we need to, you know, as again, we're excited to sit down with the Budget Finance Committee and kind of share the numbers of what we've got. The other thing too is, as we're looking to the future, not this year, but the year after next, if we are wanting to scale up the model that we've seen in South Dakota, then we, we need to start planning now for financial allocations to recon. And again, it's been my recommendation that we do the reconfiguration at, at FARA because they, they don't have any walls and that would be the easiest place. This is not one of those things, and we've seen it in South Dakota where you just don't have to, you can have a schedule, or a skip, you can have a gradual increase of services based on the parents who sign up for it.
Did they present it to their board? And I know, I know what you're talking about, the reconfiguration. I'm not saying that separate. Did they present to their board that it would not be an additional expenditure? That's what I thought you said, but I might-
As far as, now, the word too, that came from the superintendent is that it would not be an increase in staff costs, right? But the thing with it is, they are growing, so they are building buildings. I want to say they're putting an elementary up every other year. So the design of this concept was already in place with the buildings they're putting up. So they're building a building anyway, so they just, they designed it such, and then the staffing, they had already projected for that anyway, so there was not an increased cost. For us, it's going to be a little bit different in that we're not having the growth that they have. And so, again, if this is something we're going to want to do, then we need to start financially preparing for it now.
Because like, is the platform, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is that would be outlined in like a budgetary, like when you propose it, right? As far as, because I was wondering, like, are there other components of it that are going to be expenditures that I didn't, like, maybe I won't even realize?
The programming that they've gotten in place does not cost any extra.
Okay.
They have had digital devices, they have their curriculum, they have a software package that enables them to do real-time feedback for kids and all that. That has not been an increased cost. That's just a cost of doing business. They have an advantage in that they're able to put up a physical plant. In our world, we're going to have to tweak our physical plants to meet that. Okay? But yes, and then something to keep in mind for the board too is that I think it's important to note that our funding, that we are, our funding source is the city and we appreciate you being here tonight and your support of the schools and carrying our message back. Thank you. But the BEP funding, the funding from the state does not come until later in the fall. And that even though we work out our plan and get things figured out at this point, the wild card in all this is the January 1st insurance adjustments. And right now, it's a pick and a poke as to what that might be. So that's another thing that we, we will, again, educate the building, the Budget Finance Committee, we'll put together a budget. We will present what we projected to be at the city council meeting, but everybody needs to know that we also need to have so many reserves for increased insurance costs that will come in June.
And when's the time, can you give us a little timeframe? Because I don't know that it was as easy to follow last year. So when would be the ideal time that we're going to approve, like, what's the timeframe for that?
Well, it's my understanding, and Mike, you're going to have to help me out here a little bit on this, is that we would be putting the budget together and that what we projected to be, and that it would be shared with the city, which would, I think our first meeting was April 8th.
It was due, it was scheduled for the 8th. That's, we had a conflict with their meeting that night and the mayor's told me to stop worrying, that he would, we would get something worked out.
Okay. So we would have, we would have an anticipate or a draft budget for that meeting for the city council. But again, Jessica, until we have a better idea of where our state plan is going to be-
When does that usually, when do we ever get that, Mike?
What's that?
The BE, like when you find out, it was kind of-
Later June.
Yeah, we've had, we've had several years, we've had to wait on that figure and the county's-
County's always June and city, while the city burns up their numbers, they don't, they have free readings in June.
Right.
They finalize it.
Right.
So I could spur them on the revenue side until June.
Right.
Do we have a date for our meeting?
We've not set one.
No, that's, that's one of those clauses in there that administration would help provide the meeting place and the schedule and Ms. Lawson, I anticipate something from you fairly soon and from Ms. Huston.
It's all contingent upon your schedule.
Yes.
We'll work something.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the point being is that financially, we do have some money in our fund balance, but it's, you know, I'm a banker's son and you don't use your savings account to make your mortgage payment. And so, in the event too that we have-
That has not been Mr. Rodley's position nor the board's position ever.
Perfect, perfect.
We understand that it's a savings account for one-time use.
One-time use, that's, we're all in line as far as that goes.
I don't want to have insurrection with Dr. Lynn right here.
But, but all that being said too, there could be possibly some projects we would look at in the fall, which, you know, just like when we were up at Collierville, you know, they ended up having to do some kind of a referendum so that they could make those additions to the high school. And I guess that would be the other thing that I would raise up. I'll speak to it again here in a little bit, but, you know, our high school has been meticulously kept up, but it is a 65-year-old building. And so, just as we're looking to do some work at FARA, we're also going to need to look into do some work at the high schools. But more to come and Kim and Pat will get a time scheduled around when Pat can be here.
Thank you. Board policy recommendations, I believe we're looking at 1.803, which is tobacco free schools, policy 4.209, alternative credit options, policy 4.603, promotion and retention. Those are all covered in the study sessions, is that not correct?
Yes, correct. And very minor, we were putting in time limits.
And that was TSBA recommended and also accepted by Mr. Miller.
Also.
Any discussion? If not, I'll ask if we have a motion to approve those board policy recommendations. Do we have a motion?
Seconded.
Huston was quick on the stick there and Dr. Lynn was the second. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for the floor of the recommendations, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Trustees for non-certified retirement. Should I read this?
Should yes.
Non-certified retirement program requires appointing trustees for the plan. Three trustees are to be named by resolution of the board. Administration proposed that trustees be the chairman of the board, superintendent, and director of personnel. As the reorganization of the board takes place at the September meeting, the trustees proposed would be the newly elected chairman of the board, superintendent, director of personnel. Pretty straightforward and necessary. Do we have, I'm sorry?
No, that's the structure we're recommending.
Is there a motion to accept that non-certified retirement committee?
Seconded.
Ms. Fogarty has a motion. Who has a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Johnson with a second. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for the motion, please respond by raising your hand. Any opposed? Working good. Civil rights coordinator. Ms. Huston, I may have to call. There he is. Director of Personnel is appointed to serve as civil rights coordinator. Coordinator of civil rights is appointed by the board to serve as a liaison for parents, students, employees, and the school system. The coordinator will serve Title VI of 1964, Title IX, and Section 504 of the federal nondiscrimination statutes. This will assist in the determination to tell the city schools to not discriminate against any individual on the basis of sex, race, national origin, creed, age, marital status, or disability in its educational programs, activities, and employment. Do I have a motion to accept that needed?
Seconded.
Ms. Johnson with a motion.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Lynn with a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have any further discussion?
Go ahead.
When you talk about the basis, I think that the word gender should be used instead of the word sex. That's what I recommend.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Now, do we have to have an amendment to the motion?
I think we can make it as an editorial change.
Okay. All right. Motion will be as read with the exception of gender replacing sex. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for the motion as proposed, please respond by raising your hand. Going backwards. Any opposed? Mr. Carver, that has you.
Okay.
City Board liaison.
Now, shift your hand.
Before I call for the City Board liaison, I do want to lift up Dr. Zimmerman and Susan Fanning. We had folks from the Tennessee Department of Education that were on site for three days and looking at our practices. It was a very good experience. We learned a lot from that. Specifically, Toloma High School, Bel Air, and East Lincoln were the sample size. They were the ones that got to do the deep dive. Susan, you want to just share with them the reports that they've got on their board member's agenda there?
Sure. Absolutely. Each of you should have a multi-page report that we received from the E.S.A. and the IVEA state monitoring from last week. I'm here on the, on the first page, it talks about noteworthy items. Those are items that we received praise for. One of those included our Board of Education and how they thought it was noteworthy that each of you take, are adopted to a particular school and are involved at the school level and such, at such a great level of involvement and how that's something they would like to share that with the rest of the state.
I think they said-
Champion for each of your schools.
They said that they had not seen it in the state.
Yes, yes.
So that's kind of cool.
So they want to, they want to share that. Along with, they really liked how, like our marketing department at the high school helps promote other activities within our district and how we have a lot of crossover and how we try to bring in our programs to support other programs. Parent summits, that was another area of noteworthyness, where we offer parent summits. We've done two so far and the third one will be in April and this is something that's organized by our special education department. So those were the noteworthy items that they mentioned. Below that are recommendations, these are not requirements, but things they suggested that might help improve our programming and standardize the self-assessment process that we use for ESL. ESL is English as a second language. To standardize that process and to make sure we all understand the reclassification of an ESL student if they've been misclassified. So what that process looks like. On the next page, there are items that we do have to address. One, the first one mentioned is making sure that we have a home language survey for every student. A home language survey is given when a student enters Tallahassee City Schools and a parent indicates his language, the first language of the child is that the language spoken at home. If that is not the language, the first language of the child, that's not the language the child speaks at home, then our ESL teachers screen those students for ESL services. And we just have to make sure we have a copy on file of the original home language survey, the first one that was ever given to those parents to complete.
Is that a thing of them not coming in, Susan, then? Is that a thing, is that a thing of them not getting returned?
And, and what they did is they pulled a sample of cumulative records to look and in some records, maybe we had more than one. Because it might have been sent home every year.
That's what-
And, or a child came to us and when we got their transfer records, one was in their previous record, so some of it is just cleaning out.
Okay.
On that, and making sure, and in some schools, they might not have been put into the cumulative records yet. And so, we just have to account for those and receive some clarification on what all we needed to do with those forms. And that leads into the second one, which is the occupational survey forms. These go home every year. This is to identify our migrant students. These forms do not have to be kept in Q records, but they do have to be kept in a folder in the office and just making sure we're accounted for every student to make sure they have that.
I have a question. What year did we start doing the occupational surveys? I'm out of zoom, you know.
No, I'm not sure if the year that it started. I know it's been many years.
Yeah, must have been, it had to have been 2012. Because that's the last thing I can be responsible for.
And normally, the home language survey, just as the occupational survey, typically go out in the registration packets at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And we, they're just wanting us to have an inhaling process. We're making sure we have one for every student and then making sure we have that in the right location for every student. The third one is ensuring our ESL students receive their required services every day. If a student scores a 3.4 or below on their LITA test, which is their, English as a second language test, they're required to receive an hour of ESL services every day. That includes Wednesdays. And we did learn that this did not have to be outside of their core time, this could be in lieu of their core time. And the rationale for that is if they don't have access to the English language, they need access, they need the skills, or they need the instruction for learning English more so than they are going to, more than what they would get from a core class. They're going to be able to access the language first. So we are, we are looking at our schedules and currently working on all of these things that are highlighted for us. On the next page, revising our RTI plan. We're required to benchmark written expression and provide interventions for written expression just like we do for reading and for math. So we've reached out to the state for some supporting resources to help us with that. And then the next-
They revised the RTI funding plan, did they?
That didn't come.
Wonders and wonders.
It was just the programming piece that came up. Below that was, is the development approved of five-year strategic plan. On the following page, documentation of our title-one meetings. We have three title-one schools, Bel Air, East Lincoln, and FARA, and there are certain meeting requirements that they have each year. And for every meeting, they have to have certain pieces of documentation. So making sure that we have the right pieces of documentation for every meeting was something they highlighted. The school improvement plan review. Each year, the LEA plan is written, which supports the district plan, the district strategic plan, and then every school aligns their school plan with the LEA plan and district plan. And one of the things they noticed is we needed more documentation at the meetings we have when we are developing the school improvement plan and as we adjust that throughout the year because it's a fluid document. It's supposed to be a working document. On the next page, they highlighted that we need to provide more training on procedures and policies for foster care for English DSL students and the homeless, making sure that everybody at our school level is aware of all the policies and procedures for that. If you notice to the right of each piece that's been listed, there's a timeline. Some of those timelines are really soon and some of those timelines are extended to give us time to do that. When you, on the next page, this looks at special education monitoring. And on that piece, they did pull special education files, they pulled IEPs and looked for all of the different things that are supposed to be in those files, which is a lot of information.
Yeah. And I'm going to interject here. I do want to apologize to our special ed director, Tammy Hafte, because she also got to go through this review process. You're sitting back there, I didn't see you. No. And, you know, I guess one of the things, you know, special education is a high priority thing for us and that we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and prioritizing. And Tammy, I don't know if you want to speak to any of those things from the special ed exit survey or not? I mean, anything that comes to mind?
From the review there?
Yes.
I think also, the prior written notice where we have three that were not compliant, that didn't really surprise us because the prior written notice is a difficult thing for everyone to understand because the word prior doesn't mean prior in this case. You actually got that notice after the meetings. So we work on that all the time. The thing that we were a little bit surprised about is that we got six things, I believe, for not having the appropriate signatures. And that's something that we, I think they, case law drives a lot of what we do, so there probably has been some type of case law that has now caused this to be a bubble point of their reviews. So now we know we need to do it. But we did not realize that in the IEP meeting, if you just provide data from A's web, progress monitoring or whatever, you're supposed to have someone to sign on that line that they contributed. And we just didn't realize. to have someone to sign on that line that they contributed, and we just didn't realize that. So overall, I was, I was pleased with it.
So it's a lot of the formal, like, cross this tee, like, jump through this tee, like, go back through that tee, because they change a lot of, it's always had to know, I think, right? So-
For, for this size district, with the, with the number of folks that we've got on IEPs, I, I was very pleased with, with the work that Tammy and Kim Atkins and their team, their team put together and stuff. Again, not, the only thing that we really, just a few surprises, of course, the strategic plan we already knew about, and, I think, I think overall, as far as that piece goes, I think, I think it was, you know, it, they're not here to beat us up, they're basically here to hold up a mirror so that we can look in the mirror and see if there's things that we need to address and such.
I know, I'd like to say, too, that they were so complimentary of our schools, of our personnel, especially the principals, the buildings that they went in, they were so complimentary of our principals that they knew all the students' names. So thank y'all.
And they said it was very evident that our employees put children first, and to me, that is, all of this other stuff is very secondary. That was very obvious to them. And it wasn't in every school that they went in, so, I mean, in Tallahassee, they know.
I have a question, too. Do we have a number on, on homeless students?
We do. If you have a number.
What is that number?
We have identified as homeless students right now, and it's, it's a, it's a fluid number. I think we have about 18 right now.
18. So that includes families that are currently living with another family?
Double-duck housing.
And then what, and Ms. Kim, what, what are some things that we can do to try to address that number?
I, I think that might, I think that might be a, a conversation, that, that's going to take some time and some rainstorming. I know that, I, I talked with folks from the Lions Club, I think it was Saturday night, they're looking at some, some support systems. I think it needs to be a community-wide initiative, and I know, one of the churches I, I'm familiar with is also looking at, you know, what can we do to support and help these folks, so. And of course, here at the schools, we're, we're always going to reach out and, and help those folks, but that, that's probably going to be a, a bigger conversation than what we can do.
Sure. Well, when do you imagine, talk to the city?
Absolutely. I mean, that's something where the city is involved with a lot of the churches and a lot of the organizations.
Sure.
It's a matter of, a lot of those people need to, need to come and reach out to people, and they don't, and specific reasons, there are personal reasons.
Yep.
Right. I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is, and I do have a building that can be transformed to help some of the homeless families, and I'm willing to utilize that.
That's good, that's good. Along with the general ed, the Title I, the buildings, the special ed, we also had an OCR, which is an Office of Civil Rights Visitation. Anything you'd want to add from that, Dr. Zimmerman?
It was a CTE-directed, so I, I got a surprise email in the fall, it said CTE was my number for this, and obviously, Office of Civil Rights Review, so I gave, had a couple months to give them, about 30 pages to pay for it on the facilities and programs, and they came in last week and did one day, walked, walked the building very carefully, two very nice, I haven't been from the state park. Wednesday, they did interviews with parents, students, teachers, admin, and then they did surveys on all of those groups. First up, they came in the afternoon and gave us our feedback. Really, the only, there were no administrative issues, that they found that what they were looking for are barriers to students to participate in CTE. So they, they're looking at the whole building, but in particular, how students have access to CTE programs. So they, they, they gave us a list, a summary list, and I summarize. A few signage issues, for example, we have great handicap parking in the front, but there's no sign that says, I mean, the sign says faculty parking, instead of handicap parking, go this way. We have van parking, but there's no little sign that says van parking, it just says handicap parking. We have inaccessible areas such as the marketing room and, and, you know, the mezzanine area out in the annex, our outdoor classroom, sound booth, various restroom stalls, those kinds of things, really for areas that students would access as part of their regular curriculum that you could not access if you were in a wheelchair. So some of that involves curb cuts, some maybe long more lift, and then simple things like, it's an old building, so we still have some of the old ground door dogs and some of the old brown faucet handles. She had a door pressure, this cool door pressure tool, so if she felt like the door was a little bit too heavy to push, she would not hang the door. Overall, there was nothing that was, I think, insurmountable.
I think-
And they're very complimentary about such an old building being well taken care of.
And, and again, that speaks to our, our custodial staff, our building maintenance staff. The, I think one of the things that they lifted up was going into the restrooms, and they all smelled clean, which was, was a big thing. And, and the team that was here with the high school, for free, they're willing to come back and do an assessment of all the other buildings, which I think-
Which ties into my community report.
Ties into your community report and stuff, so that would be something, we'll get them on the schedule for the fall. But again, I, I do want to lift up and acknowledge Ms. Haffield, and Ms. Zimmerman, and Ms. Fanning for the work they did, telling our story, telling our story. And with that, I think we're ready for the City Board Liaison's report, if there is one.
Uh, yes, just a few things. Obviously, we're getting ready for budget season, as, as y'all are, so we, I've already had our community service organizations, that each one of them came and talked to us, so they'll be setting up the schedule soon, we're trying to get with USW to do that. Recently, we, the Honorable Alderman was Lily Charbonneau, and so it was a really nice treat to have her with us, a very, very bright and impressive young lady, very, very. We recognized the 2019 T double S double A State Girls Wrestling Champions recently, so it was a rainbow of them and parents and grandparents, so it was, that was really an honor to be able to do those. And as you see going down Jackson Street and even over on Wilson Avenue and some of the other places, we've still got, we've got a lot of businesses, a lot of things going on, a lot of positive things going on, a new restaurant that will be taking over the Crockett's Building in the next month to two months, so that's exciting. It's actually an existing business who has decided to invest more in our community, so it's a great thing, so we, we appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Any personnel adjustments?
We have one hired Teresa Ricos, a custodian at the high school, transferred to all of Castile, just transferred where she was. Emily has a reservation, Mr. Walker.
Quick question from Ms. Zimmerman. How did you get the OCR? Why didn't, hadn't the state get?
We were the lucky recipients of the, they picked eight students state, I mean, eight schools statewide, and they had just a magic formula.
Then you were really lucky, because you were one of the eight.
One of the eight.
And then you were one of all kinds of people that I guess could have been questioned on this.
Yeah, they, they had a kind of a formula of how to-
I'd go to the racetrack with you.
Exactly. So eventually, all schools, all CTE programs will be investigated in this way, or monitored in this way, we just happen to be the lucky winners.
Is there a timeframe? Like, I know you in the past, they said, like, you haven't had it done in 10 years, so-
Yes, we have to put together a proposal for how we're going to fix all of the issues by April 16. We don't have it fixed by April 16, but we have to present, and Tim Jensen was in on that, all of that information.
Yeah, some of that will come back to the-
And how long then before we might have this same review, is what I was wondering, like, you know, like I said, they, the state said it's been 10 years since your last review, that's why you're having this, I was wondering how long?
I think we're on it for five years.
Right.
Okay.
Unless somebody files a complaint or something like that, then we are, we should be good for five years.
Okay.
Any, anything else? If anybody needs to, on their work group, needs to visit with, Mr. Carwood, please do so, and we are now adjourned.